Good.
They got the big ones too though.
All right, it's seven o'clock, we're gonna get started.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, we'll start with. Warrants.
Okay, what the heck's going on? You're gonna have to help me. The sense is why you can't leave. Look, there's my icon, it's not, nothing showing up.
Uh, warrants over five hundred dollars are ASPs best for one thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. Voice forms for five hundred fifty dollars and ninety-two cents, greatments for one thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, chemical services for eight hundred eighty-seven dollars. CNI fiber for nine hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty cents, Evapar for four thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, Force Technologies for two thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, reimbursement to grant account for one thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Indiana Michigan Power for four thousand six hundred six dollars and ninety-eight cents. JP landscaping one thousand three hundred four dollars. Local Government Services for eight hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Utility Supply six hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty cents, Verizon Wireless six hundred two dollars fifty-five cents, Wex Banks, Wex Bank one thousand four hundred seventeen dollars and eighteen cents, WM Corp. for eleven thousand one hundred five dollars and eighty-eight cents, and Woodburn Hardware for five hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the warrants?
No, move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? We can roll right into the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor to approve the minutes? Passes unanimously. Go to board report spread. Nothing?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Brian?
Only an update, we met with Commonwealth last week to start off the, uh, the water study for the updated the water facility, possible expansions and stuff. What we're gonna need here coming in the future, and then we also met with them for the asset magnet program, so those two projects would be forward. Just an update there.
Thank you. All right. Rachel, would you like to go?
I'm up to bat. Um, well, Rachel Black, Allen County Economic Development, so, um, as you know, uh, our department with the Department of Planning Services, Economic Development is the Administrator for your tax abatement program. Uh, part of that administration is, uh, also includes the annual compliance, um, so that is what, um, I'm here for this evening. So, um, as required under state law, um, any company that's approved for, um, an economic revitalization area designation and then files for, um, a deduction, um, must file a compliance with statement of benefits forms or a CF one form. So, uh, those CF one forms are due to the county auditor as well as, uh, this body, um, by May fifteenth of every year. I will go over just briefly, um, just as a reminder, the tax abatement policy under the compliance section, um, talks about companies have to comply with their, um, retained or, uh, created jobs and or created jobs, uh, seventy-five percent of what was promised on their original approval. If we, uh, if they don't meet that, then I am allowed to look at the salaries, and those would also be under retained or created, and those would be, um, seventy-five percent of what again was promised, um, for that, so, um, the resolution that you have before you, um, we're looking at, um, three different, um, resolutions that were approved to are essentially the same company, but they go by many different names. So, um, we have the BNP Real Estate Holdings LLC, PNB Cold Storage, and we have BNP Real Estate Holdings LLC, North American Cold Storage Inc., and then Phoenix Manor Apartments. Um, and then every year I give you all a little update of kinda where we're at, um, with the, uh, with the company, and is that okay if I do that? Okay, so the BNP Real Estate Holdings and PNB Cold Storage, that particular abatement was approved in twenty eighteen. Um, the investment included, uh, twenty million dollars in real estate and a two point seven mi- million dollar, uh, personal property investment. Um, they plan to create thirty new employees with salaries at one million one hundred twenty-three thousand and two hundred dollars. And they have hired, let's see, sixty with salaries at one point one, little over one point one million. Um, the company retained forty employees with salaries over one point four million. So they have total employees of a hundred with salaries at two million six hundred forty-three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. So, um, based on your policy, they are compliant. I will note that they have five years left in, on their real property abatement and three years left on their personal property. Do you guys have any questions on that first one?
Well, didn't they, did they get another one?
They did, I'm doing that one next.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so, um, in twenty twenty-three, uh, they were approved, um, for, uh, real property abatement for ten years, um, and the personal property was for five years. Uh, they plan to invest six point five million in real property, um, as well as seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand in personal property. Uh, they were to create fourteen jobs and retain thirty. For this particular approval, they created twenty-nine and retained the thirty. So for that particular approval, they have, uh, fifty-nine total employees. And, um, let's see, so they also are compliant. And for this one, since it's new, they have nine years left on their real property, and they have four years left on their personal property. And then the last one that we have is the Phoenix Manor Apartments. Uh, they were approved, uh, back in twenty fifteen, so, um, let's see. This investment was four point two million, and they were to create two jobs. The salaries on their statement of benefits were, uh, twenty-three thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars for both of those jobs, I believe they're part-time. And on their, uh, CF one form, uh, they stated that they're actually paying salaries at forty-six thousand eight hundred and one dollars. So, a little over, um, double of what they had promised. Um, and they do have three years left on that, so they're widening down on that one. And then that's all I have for you today.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
So two point six million on BNP is what their wages are paid. You say it's a hundred employees, they got a lot of part-timers there or something?
Um, I don't believe so. Yeah, they stated they have, like I said, the, um, forty that were retained originally, and then the number of additional employees they had promised was thirty, and they actually, uh, hired, um, they put here sixty. So stating that they have now total of a hundred. So I would have, I believe those are full-time jobs, but I would have to, uh, ask them.
Well, yeah, seems like it's a little bit low for full-time, but. If you calculate it out.
Right, right.
Maybe you've got some temporaries in there, part-times or something.
Yeah, they may.
That's what I was thinking, it just said twenty employees at a million, but they have sixty at one point four.
Yeah.
It's three times the amount of employees for four hundred thousand more dollars, you know? I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 'cause on their, the second, um, the second one, um, they were to retain thirty, um, which they did, and that was at one point three million. And then they were to create fourteen, and they said they did twenty-nine, but, um, what they reported out, was six hundred and thirty thousand was what was promised, and they're paying two ninety-two, five twenty-one, so obviously that's, not as much in salaries as what they had promised. Um, but they're meeting, based on the policy, uh, they are meeting compliance. But as far as the, the wage and go, um, like you were saying, is probably not as much. And I'd be happy to get you copies if these, if you'd like, I can send them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
While we're on this, we can go ahead and move forward with, uh, the resolution. All entertaining motion.
So move, accept the resolution by reading title?
Second.
Thanks. Well?
Everyone's in favor?
Huh?
Everyone in favor of that?
Yeah, all in favor of, by title only?
Yeah.
Okay, resolution twenty-five dash two eighty-five, Woodburn City Council, resolution approving the two thousand twenty-five pay, two thousand twenty-six, real and personal property compliance with statement of benefits CF one forms.
Okay. Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. What am I supposed to say?
So move.
So moved, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so moved.
Seven, all right.
I don't do these very often, so I'm.
All those in favor of accepting resolution twenty-five dash eight, or two eight-five? Passes unanimously. All right. You can have your evening back if you like.
It's not fair.
I think your agenda's too long.
No. All right, uh, let's back, bounce back to old business, uh, twenty twenty-six raises in insurance.
Yeah, I think Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I think Brian brought this up at the last meeting that I was not at. Uh, wait, let me go back to that real quick, so we accept, we read it, accept the reading, and we're gonna adopt?
Yes.
At next meeting?
No, we did.
We're adopting now.
We did the reading, accepted the reading.
Oh.
And did not adopt.
Okay.
So we have a motion to adopt?
Yeah, we need to, motion to adopt the reading?
Motion to adopt.
Or adopt the resolution, sorry.
Resolution.
The resolution.
Second. All in favor to adopt the resolution? Okay, that was easy.
Jan, are you impressed so far?
Oh, yeah.
Things going real smooth right now.
We're doing really well tonight.
Well-oiled machine around here.
Uh, yeah, so Ryan brought up raises, and I wanted to bring them up before it gets to be October, we're gonna start doing pre-budget stuff here pretty soon. I don't want to wait that long. Uh, I included a resolution, so the pay ranges have to be increased, 'cause some guys are at the max limit. So the pay ranges, that ordinance twenty-five, fourteen thirty-one it would be, and then the ordinance, that's for, um, appointed, and the other one is for elected officials. Those are the new ranges on there, I was included a packet, this is just my handwriting on it, so excuse that. That's what, um, if we did a five percent across the board, that's what everybody's rates would look like. On the right side shows their old rate, on the left side under their name, which would be their new rate. Some people are hourly, some people show the salary, what it'd be per pay period. Uh, talking to these guys, uh, there was, there's been three percents and five percents and six percents, then, a flat amount based on numbers, and you guys weren't here for that, but there was a flat amount based on just a, a flat number that they did, and they divided that up by the pay, but there wasn't one last year for these guys, so, I don't know, I like keeping things simple. I said five percent, they didn't get one last year, inflation, five percent across the board for everybody.
Is that normal? I thought it was three percent.
Usually it is, these guys, they didn't get one last year.
It's, yeah, it's three percent every year, but we didn't get one last year.
Right, so that's what we're making up for, basically.
Yeah.
Cause it's always like three percent.
The twenty twenty-four colo was, just try a five, by itself, just for last year, yeah.
Wow, things have changed since I've worked. So.
Yeah, usually every, I mean, usually most, I don't know, office place, they give you a three percent, or some places have a, a set amount of money, and they'll, and they'll do it based on, you know, performance-wise or something like that, we're not that big, I don't think. You know, setting an amount of money, then you, if you have fifteen people you're trying to divvied up against, that might be something, 'cause some guy might be a rock star, some guy might be, you know, dragging a butt, but we got three guys, or, you know, three guys each, how do you tell one guy he's, you're getting an amount?
No, I think that's the right thing to do, I was wondering why it was that high, but.
Yeah, and, you know, we have a couple guys that might be leaving too, so, or, you know, that, ready for retirement, or we have to think about new people that we're gonna be hiring in.
Yeah, you gotta compete.
Yeah, so my suggestion on the ordinance would be with the ranges.
Yeah.
Leave the low end at the low end and bump your top, give yourself a little bit more spread, so you've got a little bit of wiggle room on where you're bringing folks in that base of experience.
That's true.
'Cause if you take your bottom up five percent too.
Uh, I don't think the bottom came up five percent. I think the bottom came up to where the, like, guys were at, and then went below that. There wasn't an exact science there, I was just, you know what I mean?
That's fair, but, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
And then trying to figure out the.
The bottom end of, I wouldn't raise the bottom end of the range too high.
Yeah, I don't know how much, I can't remember how much that was.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about it when we were like mad, right, I mean.
What does, when you're hiring somebody in, I mean, they might, someone might look at this and go, the low pay is only thirteen bucks, I'm not. But then the high end, you know, I don't know, you get into a situation where you, you know, you're looking at, you have to think about budgeting too, is you're looking at, you hiring someone in at thirteen dollars, or they, you could keep raising the top, well, thirteen dollars to thirty-six dollars, you're like, I don't know about this.
Well, I think that set at low is, if, you know, most of my friends are low, it's, it's just there, you know?
I get what you're saying, though, that way you have that bottom number to be able to, if someone comes in with no experience that they have.
Or someone time comes in for that, you know, whatever, you got it down there. I will set that, you know, but.
I have, yeah.
I'd have to look at the ordinance.
Yeah, I have to see what the old one is, 'cause I just, this, I had to redo this entire thing, so it was a total pain.
This is just for thought process right now, there's no action on this, is there?
No, 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 this is just to give you your guys' head, 'cause we're gonna start coming up with budgets soon.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't wanna come up to September or October and we go to pass the budget, the first round of the budget, whatever it is, and then we go, we're about raises, or like, so, it's not really that far away, I think we start working on budget, like pre-budget stuff this month.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be, you know, we only, we're probably only gonna have six, five more meetings by time now, and we have to pass the budget, so. We, it's a couple months, but it's gonna be here.
Yeah, four months.
Yeah, you know, leaves are gonna be on the ground.
Two more meetings.
No, don't say that. Not yet, we're not ready for that.
So.
All right.
It's winter, again.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep, and then the other thing was insurance too, is, I know we had, I, I know when I interviewed for the deputy clerk position, there's a lot of people asking for insurance, so, it's not something we offer right now, I think the people that we have here, um, from what my understanding is, that everybody who got hired in here or is here now has insurance with their spouse. So we have to kinda play a mixture of, if we get insurance, we're gonna hire more people on, are we gonna, you know, at some point, something's gotta give, right, 'cause you're gonna hire new people in, not having insurance, gonna cut your pool down, but also if we get insurance, I know there's six of us or seven, there's only eleven people who are eligible for insurance anyway, but then if you have six people or seven people who can't get it, 'cause they have, or it's gonna mess up with their spouse insurance, that's a big number of people, if you're screwing seven people out of a hundred, that's one thing, seven people out of eleven is gonna hurt. So my idea was upping the amount on the task card. Simplest thing to do, we don't have to pay, I mean, we pay per month for it.
On the lock card?
On that task card, we have like a little, it's like an HRA card kinda, you spend it on medical stuff, so if you were the doctor, you can spend it on that or medicine, basically.
Yeah.
Um, but my idea was, pay, I mean, we're not probably gonna pay as much as insurance is, but at least cover, you know, if we up it to something that insure, what insurance would cost for like a spouse's insurance, whatever their premium is, we put that on the task card to cover that end of thing, so you have insurance, but you don't. So.
So the mayor and you do not have any insurance, I guess I wasn't aware of that.
Mayor does.
Well, yeah, I have, we have insurance, I have insurance through my wife's job.
Yeah, but I mean through the city.
The city, no, there's no insurance offered at all, so right now.
Even the mayor, you say?
Well, 'cause if you offer it to one, you gotta offer it all, yes, well, the majority of us don't.
Even an elected official, I mean, not us, 'cause we're part-time, but I mean a full-time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
The majority of us don't want it because our spouses have it.
I gotcha.
Pass an ordinance to our city council gets it.
No, that's okay, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, to be perfectly honest, it's.
Yeah.
Right.
Ordinance strip.
Yeah, when Obamacare came in, you can only carry, you can only carry the one.
Part-time.
One insurance, so what happens is, I'm on my, I'm on my wife's insurance, well.
You can't leave.
Her insurance kicks me off if it's offered here, I'm no longer allowed to be on her insurance, so I have to pay for my own insurance.
That's all, that's, I, I'm pretty sure it's all insurance companies.
Yeah, it used to be able to carry dual insurance, when I was having a trend, I got paid not to be on their insurance at some point in time.
Yeah.
They paid me not to be on their insurance and go somewhere else. They, that's not offered anymore, I mean, now if I get kicked off, you know, the insurance rate, we're both paying for insurance now, like, whatever cost it.
And they do check, 'cause I've gotten.
Oh, yeah.
I've got letters from these guys, from their spouse's insurance.
Yeah.
That they ask if we offer insurance here.
Really?
We're gonna have to sign this up, send it back saying we don't offer insurance. So.
Well, that's, that's, that's expensive, first of all. I don't know how we could afford to do that, actually.
Long and short of it is, you have to get something else up to offer it, so.
It's where, the whole point came up is that some of our guys are, are aging out, I mean, I hate, it sounds terrible to say, but it's happening. They bring in, bring in new workforce, we, it's got to be, you know, even on, especially on Brad's end, too, bringing workforce, we have to start offering something, you know, start moving them in, so.
Keep them here, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is what it is, I mean.
Yeah, I get that.
I got two guys that are coming up that are, you know, are gonna be gone within the next, you know, two to three years, four years, so. Does a, you know, they are, you know, well, it is already their, their time and age, so I don't know how much longer he's sticking around, so.
Yeah, yeah, just something to say you guys.
Yeah, as a bigger, better, get ahead of the game, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's a big ticket, I don't know.
Yes, yes. In last year.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about, you know, depends on how much you up it, but, I mean, I don't know how much insurance this costs, I'm sure, depends on how much you, the city would cover too, if you did offer insurance. You know, I'm sure you'd be talking about somewhere between one to two thousand dollars a month per person.
I'd say.
So that's where the idea of the task card came in for me, was you put money on the task card, say it's six grand or five grand, you're covering insurance through a spouse's insurance, not exactly, but, you know, you're co, you're covering something without adding this.
You could do ten grand.
Ten grand, yeah, yeah, well, I'm saying ten grand per month.
It'd still be money ahead.
Yeah.
It'd still be money ahead.
So I'm thinking, yeah, ten grand a month, times eleven people, times twelve months a year, what is that, compared to?
A lot of money.
And not. And with the task card, we don't have to sign up for any of the programs, let anybody come in, we don't have.
So you guys don't have that right now, or you do?
We do, it's a thousand dollars. Per.
Per person?
Per person.
Yeah, they had it when I was here.
Oh.
Yeah, per person. Was it always that amount? For a thousand?
Yeah, it's been a thousand dollars, we've had it, yeah.
Per what?
Per month or year?
No, 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 per year.
We get, so we get a thousand.
Oh, that's just per year?
Yeah, it doesn't go far.
No.
Not anymore, no.
Couple doctors, visitors, strims.
Yeah, no kidding.
Better do some face paint there.
That's what we were, yeah, that's why we were talking about doing that.
Sir, are you going to increase that?
That's up to you guys.
Okay, but.
That's something you guys should think about here, that's, you know, you mean.
Then, yeah, when we have our budget and all that.
Well, it's something that you guys have to think about and consider, okay, is that something you guys wanna do? If so, then we, I can get it worked into the budget when it comes time for the next.
But you're not talking about us, you're just talking about all, everybody else.
Everybody who already receives it.
Right, okay. Well, I think it should be increased, especially if Jan was doing it, and how long's that been since you've been gone?
It's been three years.
Okay.
And I did it for ten, so.
Three years?
We didn't get for ten years, did we?
Yeah.
You meant the whole time?
Yeah.
Wow, really?
We have this, Tim came in.
And it's been the same for ten years?
Nine years ago.
Well, thirteen years.
Twelve.
If you were ten, right, and you've been gone three.
Yeah.
So thirteen years, that, yeah, I think it should be increased. Especially with the way doctors are, it's so expensive right now.
Everything is.
Yeah, everything is, that's true.
Yeah.
That is true.
So, I mean, if you guys are in favor of increasing it, maybe think of a number and come back next month, and then that way we'll do the budget stuff.
But, but, we need to know what we can afford, I mean, you're gonna give us an idea of what?
I mean, I.
We don't know.
Yeah, okay, you gotta throw a number at it to start and see if it is something.
We work on the budget, yeah.
Or we, I'm thinking fifteen hundred, is that too low?
A five hundred dollar increase?
Mm-hmm.
A year or month?
The year. 'Cause that's all, they're only getting a thousand a year. That's not very much.
That's money you'd use to, for prescriptions.
So.
Yeah, yeah, it's basically an HRA card, you can't use it for anything else besides going to the doctor, prescription, something like that.
Am I going on too high? You can go surgery, yeah, pay off, pays off.
Were you? Six?
A year? Yeah.
He's saying six down here. I guess I'm out in left field.
He's leaving anyway.
Well, I thought, that's, I, that's what I was thinking, I mean, you're talking about, say, five thousand per person.
Geez, that's high.
Per times eleven people.
Can we afford that though?
That's.
Fifty-five thousand.
Additional fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand. And if you're getting insurance, that's probably.
Like I said, you could do, you could put ten thousand dollars a person.
Two months of insurance if you bought it.
No, that's true, you are.
For the year on that card, and still be money ahead, instead of offering insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the employee will be money ahead that way, and the city will be money ahead if you do five or six thousand dollars a year.
That's a good point.
'Cause city, Cindy, city-funded insurance would cost at least the five thousand dollars a year that you're talking right now.
Whoa, yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about, yeah, you're talking about three months.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if you can get that cheap.
So.
I like the ten.
Of course you do.
Like Terry said, I'm leaving.
No, I, I agree, yes.
Do what I can.
So I was way, I was way, I was way low.
Make a fifteen, blame.
Throw it out tonight, right?
I hear ten, I hear ten.
Yeah, I got the auction going here.
Why?
So just something to think about, we can, I can work it in however you guys want, like I said, think of a number, we come up to the next one, and we do budget.
Okay.
We'll divide it out among, I mean, it's gonna have to be divided out between tax funds and, and, uh, utility funds anyway, because we have utility guys and people here, so, um, see how it works out, I mean, you're not talking about that much of an increase, be divided on the. See how it works out, I mean, you're not talking about that much of an increase, be divided into three. Anyway, so.
Well, we should be picking up more tax revenues, these houses have been here for a couple of years now.
We did get increased last, last year when we filed that.
Yeah, you got that house bill that was just passed through, you don't know what's happened with tax revenue.
What, S P one?
House bill and, yeah. Joint bill one or whatever it is, yeah, between the two of them.
Alright. That's all I got.
Okay, well, the last item on the agenda.
I think the hate's gotten all of us here.
The property purchase next to. Shards.
Yes, what's going on there?
Okay, I. As few words as possible, he ain't gonna get it.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
You know, remember that hearing we had here a few, a couple of months ago? I called him, I said, we're gonna have a hearing, are you still interested in this thing? Oh, yeah, oh yeah. And he came to the meeting and talked about his grand ways plans. Then after the meeting, he caught Joe and I and said, I don't think I'm gonna make, I, I just don't, I don't, I'm ninety percent sure I might get it, you know, and. He got something else wants to buy it, so. I guess that's kind of the tone I got.
Okay, where, was that officially, do you remember if that was, is that under, was that under contract, or was he?
No, he was supposed to look at that and make an offer to purchase. He didn't bind it with any money or anything, he just kinda took the offer, kinda looked at it and never. And I called him since then, and of course, we see what's happening now.
You guys didn't rescind that offer then, or?
He never signed anything at this point, he just kinda looked at the paper form. I mean, I can push him a little if you want, but.
I don't even know if that restaurant's gonna stay open. Do we know anything?
Well, I'm referring to pulling the back off the table, I mean.
Somebody said they were moving stuff out there too.
Well, I mean, if your guys' offer is off there, it should be, it should be pulled back.
I don't know if it's, I don't know. July first?
Uh, like the twenty-third or something like that.
Of this month, June? Oh, July.
I mean, I can, I can touch base with him, just if you want to.
I'd rather expire it.
It's sad, I wish that thing was working for him.
Well, maybe just find out, yeah, if he, if he is, is gonna, because we have another meeting before that even. So, maybe find out if he is still planning on it, if he's not. I don't think it's.
Just to confirm it.
I don't think it's gonna hurt us.
I can't imagine him buying that.
Double check with him, and then maybe we call Kevin and. Let him know it's not going through.
And the thing is, I, I told him, are you sure you want, oh, yeah, yeah, and we went out and got another appraisal. Sixteen hundred bucks for that.
Two of them, the first one was a fifteen or a thousand or.
On a thirty thousand dollar property.
That's what we were trying to sell it for, cuz I couldn't.
So, maybe if we, if he's not gonna buy it, maybe we should rescind the offer, and if we wanna still sell it, maybe list it. And still sell it since, since we have the appraisals, I don't know how good they're, how long they're good for.
Usually six months to a year, so it'd be good if we did sell it with those appraisals.
But who, who's gonna wanna buy that with that statue out there?
There's an easement around that. I don't think that's really a big hindrance.
I mean, you think somebody would want to put something on there? That's a shame.
Yeah, I was wondering, I think, I, I just was thinking about it, and I put it on there, cuz I didn't know what was going on with it, and I seen the restaurant not. Uh, open much, so I didn't know if, if that's seeing open, I assumed if that's not seeing open, you probably didn't wanna buy the property.
You want me to update you on Ag Plus too? You know, you've heard of no competes, right? Or restrictive deeds, they don't wanna sell ingrained there, which we're not gonna do. But then they got all these, they got about five thousand restrictions in there at this point. Where, you know, basically it boils down to, we don't want you to have anybody there in the future that competes with our business. Today, what we do today, or what we ever do in the future. That's, that's a ridiculous no compete, so we're trying to work through that, maybe I'm speaking publicly here, but it is frustrating. Um, so our attorneys are kind of in between there, and they've been piddling around with a text here and call there. So, today, I just suggested we have a Zoom or a face-to-face, you know, have our attorneys there, maybe go into some different rooms or something. And just try to hack out the thing and, and see if we're really far apart, or if we're really closer together than what we are.
Is it that big of a deal? I mean, they're giving us that land. You know, to not sell it to somebody who they're gonna do business with, is it really that much of an ask?
The current business isn't the problem, like.
It's whatever they do in the future. They say they sell popcorn, now you can't sell popcorn down there.
You can't sell it to someone that sells popcorn, but if you sell it to someone that sells popcorn, and then they start the popcorn, you're not, you're not on the hook for anything. I mean, I, I don't think.
They sell yard fertilizer and garden seeds and that, well, the hardware store sells that stuff. Of course, he said, well, it'll probably be okay, you know, one of those vague things, since hardware store is there. I said, what about, you know, some co-op sell retail fuel, not bulk truck fuel. Oh, we do that in Whitley County, so, and not that we don't want a gas station there, but you see what I'm saying? If he, anything they sell now, or potentially in the future, we would be in violation, and how do you sell that to somebody else? To build something on.
Would be someone reaching out to you, I mean, like I said, if, again, if you sold to someone who does popcorn and Ag Plus starts doing popcorn. Your non-compete doesn't matter anymore, it's out the window, I mean, you, you sold it to someone who doesn't, is not doing the business as they are. And then they start, it's not on you, this property's gone. But also, it'd be someone reaching out and going, hey, we wanna, you know, or we're listed, if we wanna sell it, and they go, make sure it's not in conflict.
Your point is, no compete is no compete, they wanna restrict the deed. So, it goes into the, the title of the property. Now, I, I think, like you're saying there, I think we oughta have some, give them some restrictions on the deed, not like no commercial grain. But then have a no compete, and the other thing too, the only, every no compete I've seen has a timeline on it. It's not a forever-ever thing, it's usually a one, two, or three, or five-year limit.
And they didn't have that?
No, they didn't want a forever thing.
That's not going away.
The thing is, it's like, we're donating this thing to you, but yeah, we're getting rid of your albatross too, you know? So, I mean, with the hope that we could sell that ground down there someday, you know, and it's, it's what they say, two and a half acres.
In the grand scheme of things, when it comes down to favors. The city would be doing them a bigger favor than we ever were doing us. A hundred percent.
Yeah, cuz we're getting rid of their. Functionally obsolete old buildings.
That's true, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Unless you get someone else in there that does something worse than that, and you have something in the middle, dead smack in the middle of town that looks.
Don't we have restrictions?
Not with. Current zoning.
I mean, if they're property, they can do whatever they want, they sell it to whoever they want.
But here's a bad dude, they got prime property, and if they keep it, they're gonna put a, a garbage fence up. And we're at the fight to keep the weeds down, and it's just gonna look really tacky.
Depends what fight you wanna get in, I mean, truly is what it is.
I mean, do we wanna?
Yeah, but we.
Fight everything with the problems that are. Gonna happen if we take possession of it, or are we gonna fight everything with the problems? If they keep it.
That's a good point too.
How often do you guys meet about that?
Well, I called today, and I called a couple of weeks ago, and I talked to the attorney. Every week, I'd say, on it, average, maybe twice a week or once every two weeks.
What's his suggestion?
Well, I think we could have a face-to-face, we're gonna try to, when Joe gets back, first of the month, we're gonna try to get with him, either a Zoom or a face-to-face.
There oughta be a way to kinda.
I think so. See, that's terrible to try to do with texts or phone calls or. It's easy to say no on those things.
They seem like they've worked with you guys pretty good so far, though, especially of. The condition, we have, we'll take it if we can do this, it seemed like they've been pretty cool, hopefully they.
If you meet with them, they're pretty decent, yeah.
I mean, it's zone I two right now, so the only thing you can't put in there is adult entertainment. That's, I mean, that's. Chemical production. Outdoor chemical production and adult entertainment are like the only two things that I two doesn't allow, that I three wouldn't.
So, let's hope we can bring it to a closure.
That'd be nice.
And then if you remember too, if Ocre gives us some money, we gotta sit on it for five years, once it's gone, and put grass there. So, I think it'd be nice if we had a no compete on some of that stuff for three or five years, and then.
Because it wouldn't matter.
I don't see how I can do that forever and ever.
Well, they were doing it by putting it in the deed.
So, we should put something in the deed for him, and then take the rest of the stuff out, put it in a no compete.
Yeah, good luck with that.
No compete the grain, what they're currently doing, to me, seems pretty reasonable.
But any future stuff?
That could be, that could be interpreted as if somebody wanted to put a brewery in there. Process their own grain.
Them lawyers would work something through that they're not, that they would have probably a list of.
Grain storage and grain processing.
I, I was gonna say, is that, we, we have a business, your businesses are categorized as certain things. So, they probably write it in as this type of business as categorized by the IRS or something like that. They're not just gonna say that, cuz, oh, I can't, yeah, like you said, you can't sell it to the hardware store, cuz they have grass seed. I'm sure there's different kinds of levels of that, that the lawyers would write something in there.
And what was the price tag on, um, taking those buildings down, and?
Well, four hundred to seven hundred thousand.
How can we afford that? I don't wanna know that. Or I think I already knew that.
Like a brownfield type money that's out there. That's what we're applying for, and then there's some other.
Okay, you're doing that?
Well, we will when. When we get the.
You have to have it first.
Okay. I, I forgot about that, and now we're.
Might wanna walk away from it, let them pay seven hundred thousand dollars, but then I'm afraid they're gonna put a crappy fence up there. Weeds and stuff and junk are gonna.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
I thought it was just them selling it or giving it away to somebody else, and then putting something else.
No, they, 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 they want anybody to. Tear it down, they don't want anybody using those grain bins. Cuz we, we talked, you know, about renting those for some of our reimbursement of our expenses. They don't want anything to do with anybody putting grain here, I said, well, you know. Put it on someone else's farm, they said, but, so then they decided they would give us fifty thousand dollars for the, the copay on the brownfield or the Ocre money. Which is good, they're fine, that part of it. But all these ridiculous restrictions, and then there's one thing too, if we didn't comply, they wanted us to pay them two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know. So, if we.
For what?
If we didn't comply with the no compete or the, the deed restriction thing, so. You know, other thing too, with the face-to-face, you finally can get these attorneys to, to get on it, cuz, you know, Kevin will call, that guy will wait for two and a half weeks to get back.
For sure.
So, if we're all sitting there together.
Yeah, face-to-face, it's a little harder to say.
Have a swearing match they call.
Jan wants some.
I was getting around to it.
I didn't know he knew that.
Calm yourself.
What?
Yes, Jen.
No, I just, I had heard, Nikki said something about, uh, we weren't having fireworks this year. Is that true?
Why'd you point that at me?
Kevin said that.
I didn't say that, we never said we weren't having fireworks.
Yeah, we did. Like, when you weren't at the last meeting, the one meeting anyway, that you weren't here, and we talked about this, and, and the mayor said. We never have taken care of that.
Yes, we have.
Yes, we have.
We didn't, we didn't put on the fireworks.
You guys were here.
I'm the one that took care of it, and we always found a way to pay for it. Some of it came from association, some of it didn't, when they didn't have money.
Well, the last.
We took care of it.
Three years you guys have been. A hundred percent paid for by the city.
So, they don't have to shell out money and, you know.
The conversation that I was present for was when Jen sent her helper. That didn't have any answers. She came asking for money to have fireworks in June. We said, actually, there's going to be a car show in September, that would be a much more paying time to have.
It's not July fireworks, come on.
Neither is June.
They always have the fireworks, not even around July fourth, it makes no sense at all.
I never understood that either.
The whole thing is that, it's not just the car show, it's also the fest that's gonna be put on.
And we suggested that that would be a good thing.
To put the money towards.
Put the money towards. On September twentieth, we were having the car show and the Woodburn Festival, and. Apparently, the meeting I was acting for, did Jen come in for? Okay, well, either way, there was a decision made that. June fireworks are not gonna be done.
They actually asked them to get involved with the car show stuff to help out, and my honest, nothing's happened with that either.
She hasn't been back since.
We haven't seen a higher, any of them since that whole thing. Cuz the car show was, like, pretty, they were shutting down the full Main Street.
They never shut her down, they requested that, we requested that she come in to answer. And she never.
She never came out.
So, if the fireworks fail and do not occur, it's not because they were shot down in their entirety. It's because the request was made for if somebody come in that had the answers to the questions that were being asked, and she's not made an effort to attend.
Well, shouldn't we reach out, or can't someone reach out?
We did.
I think they have, she's.
She's not coming at all, then, you're saying?
She was perfectly clear that she, her attendance was necessary to move forward with this.
Who called her? Who got in touch with her?
Uh, that poor young lady that she's in in here.
Well, that's been a long time ago, um. I'm just, so no, we haven't reached out, I mean, can we reach out again and say, we need to see you, what's going on? I can, give me her number.
What's her name?
I don't know her, right?
That's in here frequently with, uh.
Jennifer.
Genie. Genie reached out to her, I know that.
Main, from the Main Street. I, we, we've requested to come to Main Street meetings, and she has not showed up.
Well, I think the, I think.
And no one, no one with them have showed up.
Are you talking about the association? Who we turned over all that money to?
A hundred percent.
That was our question, that's.
Where, where'd all that money go to?
How would you know? Sixty-five thousand, and we raised, you know.
They're doing a community car show, and no one else is involved, that, that group should be involved in Ghosts.
Now you know.
Now you know.
Uh, the consensus was, though, that fireworks, that to give them money, she, she didn't show up. And she hasn't shown up, and to give her the money, or not her, but to pay for the fireworks for that event, that we were already putting on another event. And that the funds could go towards that, or something that already has traction on it, that the city is, you know, involved with more. And the money would go to that instead. So, it's not like. It's not like it's not going to the community, we're, the, that amount of money and possibly more is still gonna go to something to the community. Something that we're more hands-on with, that someone's actually, Bishop, I mean, Je- Je- Genie's here almost every single meeting, who's, you know. She's meeting about this stuff all the time, so someone that's actively more involved in something than just sending somebody else to ask for five grand.
Well, do you think we're gonna have a lot of people like Jan and the neighbors, or all of them are gonna be upset cuz there aren't, cuz it's. We've had fireworks since I've been here. For eight years.
What they oughta be upset is. We're the like community in Allen County that doesn't do anything. Hoagland days.
Anymore.
Hoagland days just got over.
Hoagland days just got over, Harlan has Harlan days every year, New Haven has stuff.
Yep.
Hunter Town has stuff. Cherry Busco has stuff, Arcola has tractor pulls and stuff.
Yeah.
Monroeville has stuff.
Monroeville has a festival.
They do?
In Woodburn.
Monroeville has live music like three weekends a month.
Woodburn has nothing, and it's, it's embarrassing for the, you know, for Woodburn, I think.
Yeah, and all these new houses too.
Yeah.
People coming in here.
Yeah, but don't we have a problem because we don't have enough lawn chairs for people to work?
That's one of the Vegas things. Who put, yeah, who puts on all those events?
Yeah, who does do that?
Volunteers.
Volunteers, everybody has volunteers. While they're having Throughbirds, cause they don't have enough volunteers this year.
Yeah, it's cause they're broke.
Dead broke.
Really?
They were trying to sell it.
Yeah, Joe told me not to call this the Fall Festival, to call it just a car show, with a five K race. Cause he said we didn't wanna create some high expectation or something for the first year.
Yeah, cause not, not really the Fall Festival is not gonna be a festival festival. There's gonna be a few booths and stuff going on with the car show.
Well, they're not doing much advertising, and if they are, where are they doing it?
It's two different events, right? The car show is gonna be earlier in the day and then.
It's all one big deal, isn't it?
Things done like.
Just one day, yeah.
Just one day.
But I mean, where are the advertising, you guys?
BF Goodrich is working on the flyer, they're supposed to have that done by end of this month.
Yeah, because I mean, Jen said, if I hadn't said something, she wouldn't have known anything about it. I've seen stuff on Facebook.
These are two different events, what, Genie is not, BF Goodrich is doing the car show, and Genie's involved with.
Car show.
It's all one thing.
Car show.
That's not what was always said, was it not?
That was the uh, with the Fall Festival style thing.
Yeah.
There was two of people here that were gonna start working on that, but I don't know where that went to.
Monica's in charge of that one.
I don't know where that went.
Joe said that we're not gonna call it that.
Yeah, correct, well, yeah, lack of not knowing a terminology word for it.
I think we're having face painting balloons and stuff, aren't we?
Yeah, but that's during, that's in coffee, and the businesses are open downtown to serve food.
Yeah.
And that kind of stuff, for the car, for the car show.
All day till about three.
Yeah, till three or four, yeah.
Car show's still about three.
And the five K here, so.
When's the five K start?
Nine o'clock, that's when it runs, starts right there at the Lutheran school.
Okay.
Hey, if you have a chance, sign up, so far we got five people.
But that's a problem, there's no advertisements or anything.
Yeah, I mean, nobody knows about it, that's, yeah.
You had it on Facebook.
You should put it out here on the sign, you know, coming up and.
I, I don't know, I, I'll just speak from someone who's not from here, but this community is more, it, it. Since I've lived here for six, it's more like a remote community, so I don't know what the situation now is in Hoagland and Monroeville, but here, nobody. Their husb- like, all the wi- their husbands don't work together at BF Goodrich, and there's not a community thing, everybody drives to Fort Wayne to work. And then they come back and they drive other places to go do things, they go shopping, they go play ball, they go work. Everything is remote, and then everyone comes back here to sleep, and that's probably why you're not seeing this community days and communities.
We used to, I mean, way back when, we used to have three days.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Woodburn days, right, yeah.
Thirty-nine Friday and seven.
Yeah, and they still do it in other towns around us, I mean, I just.
So what happened? Why did it stop? It was all because of volunteers? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I think that's a lot to do with it.
It takes a lot of volunteers, it, you guys start, you start a year in advance, I mean, it takes a lot.
And the churches used to do, you know, they'd have the food tents and they do stuff.
This car show's been being talked about now for at least six months.
Oh, yeah.
At least.
Maybe a year.
Yeah.
We're having disc golf too out here, so there, there's a few things, if we can kind of build on it, if we have a good outing the first year, first day.
Well, like Jen said though, if we didn't, a lot of people don't know about this. I know it's in September, but that's not that far away.
That's on three months.
I mean.
What, what?
And like you said, there's hardly anybody wanting to run, because no, there's no advertising.
Right, well, I got that.
Can we put it on this sign out here?
Okay, but they're wait, they're waiting for the flyer.
Five K run, I mean, you only fit so much money, you know, so much thing on a board, information.
We had a brochure.
Run, go here, you know.
We did have one with all the sponsors and the five K and the car show, and then it said Woodburn Fall Festival, so Joe said, get rid of that. So, I put one down here at the.
So what's it called then?
Someone ripped it down.
Car show.
It's just called Car Show?
I guess Car Show or whatever.
That's what, that's not what, that's not what I remember, I remember them talking about, Genie talking about a separate Fall Festival.
Right.
Monica came in and said, we wanna fu- sponsor, we'll do a, a festival.
Right.
And then Genie said, no, we're already working on that, but now you're saying there's no festival, it's just a car show.
No, we're still having a festival, it's all one thing.
There's other stuff going on during the car show.
Yeah.
But it's not a festival by any means.
That's, and there's no festival.
Not a festival party.
That's not what I've understood this whole time.
Well, yeah, but Joe said they just recently changed, I mean, who the they was, but.
Oh, I didn't know that. Well, Genie hasn't been to the last couple meetings.
Yeah, she asked him.
No, she wasn't.
Oh, she was at the one that there's nobody here.
Yeah.
No, she sent Lisa, she sent Lisa Smith there.
She was at, she was at one that was nobody here.
Excuse me.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right. That's right, but I haven't seen her since.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been the last couple.
No.
But I go, I go, I go to the Main Street meetings too, it's, there, it's not a festival at all.
It's not?
It's not a festival in the park at all, no.
Oh, okay.
Well, so what are they gonna do?
It's Main Street.
They're closing down all Main Street, it'll be a car show.
And.
Fire department's putting something on, the military's putting something on.
Guards coming.
Somebody is, yeah, military, National Guard's coming in. Um, there's face painting, there's several other things that are going on, um, the restaurants, the restaurant.
Still kind of a festival though, I mean.
It, it, it is, but it's not being designated as a festival, cause it's, they're hoping to be able to build on it, I think.
I gotcha.
Volcraft is coming to place meetings, the DJ gets gonna be here all day.
Really?
There's a lot of stuff going on during that event, but there's nothing in the park, because there's no.
Oh, I didn't think, I would check it out.
Trucks coming in, there's a coffee truck coming in, there's a five K run.
Yeah.
They're, they're anticipating between four and five hundred people that day, which would be great for the day. But they, they, I got a hundred fifty cars, they said they're having a hundred fifty cars that should be here that day.
Wow.
Cool.
But BF Goodrich is putting on the car.
Right, I knew that, okay, I knew that.
Sixty-five cars.
Yeah.
Um, I went to Throughbirds Running Company, went to Dick's, you know, gave them, I'm on their race calendar. Fort Wayne Running Club, I guess apparently has got us on there, so, any other exposure we can get, we need to do it. The Courier or whatever, we need to get something in the Courier.
Courier, Westbin.
As, as of the last meeting, BF Goodrich is waiting to, their, their thing is flyers done, but their higher up's gotta be able to finalize. Whatever it is, and they said they should have it done, they're putting it on their website, they're actually creating a whole website page for this event. And they're willing to get with you, make sure you get it out here, it goes on the Woodburn page, all over Facebook, but they're waiting for that to be done. Main Street can't do anything till. That's done.
Well, what kind, when, when you say flyers, I mean, how are they gonna distribute those, are, are they, are they gonna be distributed to everybody, or?
BF Good, BF Goodrich goes, apparently sponsors ten or twelve car shows all over around here, and their, their stuff is already out. This is going on that day, and they will.
Yeah, but I mean.
The, the dates are out there, but nobody, the flyers themselves aren't done, I'm, I don't know what they're doing, they're mailing them, I have no idea with them.
Yeah.
BF Goodrich is doing all that with the car show. They've kind of limited us a little bit of what we can do on our end, because.
Their sponsor.
Right.
Their corporation has to approve stuff first, so, yeah, the corporation stuff works.
I'm sure they sponsor more car shows than just this one, it's not like it's their first one, I'm sure they're gonna put it out, I'm sure they know what they're doing.
They sponsor, but they used to put their own car show at BF Goodrich.
Yeah.
So they're, they're not like, they can't do that anymore, so they're coming here.
Oh, good.
I mean, I can contact them, I got the contact there, see where they're at on the brochure.
We just had a meeting last week, and I know they're, they're, stood there about two weeks out from brochure coming out, so.
Yeah.
That's where they're at on fireworks.
Yeah, I don't get your answer.
There you go, clear as mud. Nothing, John?
Nope.
No nuggets of useful information about?
The apartments doing okay?
Anything like that?
No bedbugs in those mattresses?
No, there's two, there was two mattresses last time, I went over there last week.
So they're still having trash problems?
They're staying beside the.
Oh, that's good.
Not as bad as well, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, they're, couldn't know what it was.
Good. What about the street down there?
Jerry?
Oh, you heard me.
Jack? Uh, look, they do have Facebook page.
Dino?
No.
Really?
Woodburn five K at BF Goodrich Car Show, yeah.
No.
But not everybody's on Facebook, that's wrong.
Bet by the joke house in the near city. It's on there.
Okay.
Nikki, you got anything?
Not that. Oh, no, I just wanna know what's going, have you got, is there somebody that's gonna replace you?
Oh, that's a good answer, it's good.
Question? Have you checked with Lisa Smith? You know who that is?
Yes, I know who Lisa is. She's not interested.
Oh, she's not?
No.
Wow.
I like the gentleman's in here earlier.
Yeah.
Skylar's being.
Skylar.
You guys probably weren't in here yet, there's a.
Been here yet.
So there is somebody?
He was on time, and came in and said hi, and left.
Who's Skylar?
The young man that's being caressed to take my position.
Oh, okay. Is he young, old, or, or does he live?
I, I know nothing about him, I've never met him.
He's got two kids that are probably under the age of three.
He lives over there in Homestead, in the new, the new.
Okay, I know who he is.
Yeah.
Well, good.
Talked to him on the phone, that's about the extent of it, so.
So this is your last meeting, alright?
This will be the last meeting I'm pressing at, so. I will make sure I've got key and laptop turned in, I think we'll know.
You better won't come find you.
Okay. I don't wanna take my keychain apart. Time, so.
We're gonna miss you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
Well, that aside.
The council will really miss you, because you know everything.
That aside, there's one other matter that's pressing, um, John, you were able to attend the last board meeting.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a little sparky, uh, there was a proposal for. Some reductions for the coverage area specifically here in town, uh, some changes and. I would encourage everybody to. Talk to John as he's on the board, and get the details on what's being proposed. Um, long and short of it is, that the engine and one of the tankers in this station will be removed. Never replaced, um, so where, this'll just be a drag rig and a tanker for. The four people that respond down there, there will be no engine, um. And then.
So, am I the only one we'll have?
Myland?
Myland, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, it's a, it's being driven by the potential for the budgets in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Being substantially reduced from what the tax funding is because of Senate Bill one. Um, there are changes that have to be made, and cuts to expenditures, but. I don't think making irreversible decisions, as far as apparatus and firehouses. The exact proper way to go about it, but uh. John has a copy of the proposal, uh, if you had a chance to look at it.
Yep.
Okay, so you understand where I'm at, okay, uh. I'm losing most of my voice on this at the end of this month, so, that's why I'm encouraging the rest of you. To talk to John, get a good understanding for what that proposal really looks like, not just for the city of Woodburn, but for the territory in its entirety. And uh.
So you're not gonna, don't you volunteer for it?
Yeah.
You're not gonna do that anymore?
No, I'm staying on.
Oh.
I'm staying on as the assistant chief of the station.
He loses his voice.
But I lose my input as a resident of the city of Woodburn and of Mami Township.
Oh, yeah. But you just can't move.
And, yeah, so.
Oh.
That's, that's where I'm at, so. It's interesting, something has to happen, but I don't think the direction we're looking is the, is the answer, so.
Is that the bill they're trying to cut the property taxes?
Yeah, it's fast, yeah, it's.
That's, that's what.
That's what it boils down to, yeah. Uh, the fire chief's been told he has to keep a flat budget for the next three years. So his twenty twenty-five dollar amount is what he has to work with for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Um, with no increases, so. A challenge, considering that East Central is now the lowest paying fire department in the county, when two and a half years ago, we were. The highest with the exception of Fort Wayne, um, I think that's going to change too, I think your surrounding districts are going to. They don't think they're affected, but the language is pretty clear that they will be, so, they're gonna end up looking different too, so. Uh. It's just, it's a tough spot to be in for the chief making a budget, but I think. We're taking, we were looking at taking cuts in places that we don't, don't want to take cuts.
So who will take care of the properties around here if fire develops?
The paid staff at the fire station. And the volunteers that are still inside the community.
Vehicles here, yeah.
There just won't be a fire engine in town.
Where's that going, I mean?
Being so, it, it's proposed, so the proposal basically is that to sell four fire engines, a tanker, a ladder truck. And replace two command vehicles.
It's okay if you don't have a fire, I guess.
Yeah, you go from five in-service engines to. Two staffed engines in a reserve, essentially.
And this would develop in twenty-eight?
Uh. No, this would be by the end of the year.
Does the cell, in the hopes that it makes them some money to?
No, it's to reduce maintenance costs.
They, they're that big a maintenance cost?
I mean, you figure a large apparatus like that, it's about ten thousand dollars a year.
Oh, my gosh.[1659.04] Oh, my gosh.
Currently pay, ready?
Which we currently pay.
Yeah, we got three hundred seventy eight homes, we're going to six hundred, we've got more exposure and risk, and we're getting rid of fire trucks, so.
We're also capping the number of volunteers to twenty four. For the entire territory.
That makes no sense.
The tra- the training for volunteers is very expensive.
It's no more expensive than.
I know, but, you know, you only show up, someone only show up part time and.
There, there's a lot of things going on, but overall.
Well, what hap- what, can I ask what happened? Why, why is this developing?
Tax revenues, their tax base, their funding's going.
Yeah, the tax base is being cut. The available revenue for ta- property taxes is being cut, yeah.
No.
Because of Senate Bill one.
I did not know that.
Yeah, SV one or HV one, whatever it's called, that Holcomb push in as soon as he got the law, reduces property taxes. So on, on the front end of things, things drop a little bit, but on the back end of things.
You lose.
Your utility bill goes out because we get cut here and then you lose a fire engine in town and.
Like my property taxes last two years it went up sixty percent.
Yeah.
So they've had more revenue.
Yeah.
I mean, what, I wonder where all that's went, oh.
Well, it goes to county because the territory's capped.
And then with these new homes, like you said, I mean, you're talking.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't see.
We're not getting revenue.
Because the state works on a, for all these budgets, you work on a levy, not on a rate. So.
Still.
The only advantage to increasing your assessed value for a given taxing agency. Is that the effective rate goes down because your levy doesn't change.
And whose fault's that?
Uh it's, how long ago did they cap property tax at one percent?
That's been a lot ago.
And long before that.
Yeah, they capped property tax a long time ago, but that's why your rate, your house is difficult at all times, that's why your houses get so much spending, because they've capped the rate.
Yeah, so when you can't increase the rate, you just increase the assessed value.
Yeah, which they do.
That's what, that's what they did, so I mean, you might as well kept the rate up and then kept the property value down, but. No, property values, houses are way up, so they can make the same amount of money or more at that, at that capped interest rate.